Yeah, when I don't, when I don't watch them, they score. When I watch them. I know. I'm gonna wait till midway through the first period and I'm gonna turn it on and I'll be like, boom, Larry, you can't watch it.
Uh huh.
Cause at one point they scored two goals and I missed two minutes. I missed three in the team period because of that. I came back and missed three and I was up to three nothing. Okay, and then I watched the whole game after this. Did you guys? Oh, you know, I shouldn't even be admitting this publicly. I'm gonna be run over.
And the last one here. Kenneth Brenn Spring. Please give us a hand here. And yeah, the point here, there were two scores, they had more in goal.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am going to call the Morehead City Council May ninth, 2022 meeting to order at five thirty PM. This is your number one, Mayor Chris Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes you into the agenda for a panel of community members. Time for the House of Committees. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk and we will call you up when we get to your item. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. We, the Morehead City Council collectively and with gratitude acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for the generation, for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, Ojibwe, Métis, and all indigenous communities permeates this land. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at cityofmorehead.com. And Madam Clerk, could I get a roll call, please?
Shelley Dahlquist, Matt Gilbertson, Laura Karun.
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Larry Selgebold.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson. Steve Lindas.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here, and if everybody could stand as they're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, and moving on to number three, Agenda Amendments. City Manager Molly, do we have any Agenda Amendments?
Yes, Mayor, we have a request to remove item eight A from the agenda.
Okay, eight A has been removed. Moving on to number four, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Niesemeyer.
Seconded by White.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. And then on to number five, Recognitions and Presentations for the Moreheart Recognition Award. And Ms. Bodie, did you want to give us some background about the award? And then I can give some information about the recipient. Yep, at least Lisa's gonna talk about the award. That's good, you can come up, you can come up too.
Well, thank you, Mayor Carlson and members of the city council. The Moreheart Award has been determined this month, the month of May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month, to Leslie Birdy and Amber Ferry. And they are being honored for their work in creating the M3 Program, which is tied to Morehead's youth and specifically started in the hockey program and really working on issues related to youth mental health. And the nominator for this award was Mayor Carlson. So it's definitely a special nomination. So at this point, I would turn it over to you, Mayor, to give a little more background on your nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Bodie. Yes, I did nominate Leslie Birdy and Amber Ferry for the creation of M3, which is a mental health program that they started for Morehead youth. Both Leslie and Amber are working moms. They both work full time at very, very demanding jobs and have three kids of their own. But it was due to the suicide of Eli Johnson in 2017 that really inspired them to start a program that helped to address mental health within our youth, specifically within the hockey program in Morehead. I'm not gonna share too much about it, but I can tell you that there was one time that I was at the hockey arena for some other city event and I actually ran into Amber Ferry. He was at a booth and they were having a hockey tournament to raise money, to bring speakers in to talk to these kids. And all of her three kids are in hockey, as are Leslie's. And all of her kids were scattered all throughout the state of Minnesota while she was here in Morehead, working this booth and making sure that people had this opportunity to talk more about mental health. So I know that Amber is not feeling good, which is why she is not here tonight. So I'm gonna just turn it over to you, Leslie, to say a little bit about the program.
Yeah, thank you, guys, for having me and thank you for this nomination on behalf of M3. You know, as mentioned, Eli Johnson is our Y on mental health. And Amber came to me one day and said, we need to do something. And I said, absolutely. So our, our mission at M3 is really to raise awareness, eliminate the stigma, and connect resources. And so we're not providers, but we definitely have a lot of community members who are as passionate as we are and who have some, you know, actual education and background in mental health. And this is truly a community award. We are just two busy hockey moms, but this community has really embraced us and supported us. And these kids are a delight. They're, they're hungry for tools and for information about managing their, you know, anxiety, doing some imagery focus. We have a bunch of modules on a mobile app that we have created. And speaking of community partnerships, we got a huge grant from RDO. So they've enabled us to roll out this mobile app and continue to provide resources. So on behalf of M3, thank you all so much. We appreciate the recognition.
So yeah, so if you guys see any kids with hats that say Break the Ice or It's Okay to Not Be Okay, that's where that comes from, is from M3. Right, moving on to number six, Approval of the Meeting Minutes. So I have a motion to approve the April twenty fifth, 2022 meeting minutes.
Lindas moves approval.
White seconds.
Okay, Lindas White. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved. Do we have any citizens in the audience who wish to address the council? Any citizens who wish to address the council? All right, seen none. Let's see here. Well, I think we have to go down to number seventeen, since it's not five forty-five. We can't do a public hearing yet. Is Ms. Houston available? All right, I will turn it over to you, Robin, to discuss the conditional use permit at six hundred, three hundredth Avenue South.
Six hundred thirtieth Avenue South.
Thirty, okay, there's a typo there. I didn't think we had a three hundredth Avenue, but.
No. Thank you, Mayor Carlson and council members. As you may recall, last, late last year, you approved a zone change for this project from community commercial to commercial mixed use. Because the applicant is proposing a four-story building, fifty-two feet in height, a CUP is required. The building itself meets the forty-five foot maximum height allowed when it's a hun, with, with, when it's more than a hundred and fifty feet away from low-density residential structures, which are located just behind the apartment buildings to the west on Fifth Street. But due to the type of roof that they're using and how we measure height, which is grade to the average slope of the roof, they need an additional seven feet for the, in the, by a CUP. The Planning Commission held a public hearing last Monday, May second, and unanimously recommended approval. Two public comments were received in support of the project citing the need for redevelopment, housing, and prospective workers for the area and a statement that the developer has been a good neighbor, willing to work with First Presbyterian Church on the use of their green space in the, let's see, it's the northeast corner, closest to the I-94 interchange. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Brian Bachman from Enclave is also here to answer, answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, you kind of answered my question. So more of just, I wanted to see how things were going with the neighborhood and if you've had a chance to meet with them. And, and, you know, I think something like this, there's, as you noted, there's no single-family homes close by, so it seems like it would fit really well. But I just, I wanted to make sure that we'd had, those conversations were happening. And it sounds like they are, and I don't know, Mr. Bachman, if you have anything to add to that. But we really appreciate that, that you're working with them. Nice to hear those positive things.
Yeah, no, super. We, we had the mayor and a couple of the neighbors, not the mayor, the pastor of the church and a couple of neighbors and one of the folks on his, of his building. What's that? Ken Foster, who's kind of trying to help them with some of this planting ideas and so on that they have. So no, we've talked through, tried how to best use that. We, you know, we're adding sidewalks to a project that didn't have to have them simply because it was the right thing to do and it eventually needs to be done. So no, we're trying to be good neighbors. I know everyone's pretty excited that the old building is almost gone. It does look better empty than it does just having it there. But yeah, it'll be much more fun when we get something new and nice there.
I just wanted to thank you and I just, you know, we really appreciate when we see those good partnerships and developers working with the neighborhood. It sets a great example, so thanks.
You bet, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Bachman. Right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution to approve a conditional use permit to exceed maximum height of six hundred at six hundred thirtieth Avenue?
Deb White moves to approve. Second, Niesemeyer.
You have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Seen none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, then the resolution passes. Well, we have, we have four more minutes, folks, before we can open for public hearings. So why don't we jump to mayor and council reports? And then we will go back. Councilmember Dahlquist.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think everyone's probably gonna wanna chime in on this, how great fun it was to do the, the Earth Day cleanup. It was a great show up of the communities and councilmember Lindas and I had, had to switch because of some conflicts in our schedules. But I just want to thank Crystal and Steve Iverson for putting all this together. It was a great time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lindas.
I'll just jump on the bandwagon or the, in case of the first two days, the buckthorn polling wagon. So I was, I was impressed with Crystal and Steve and their, their job and especially the, the citizens, residents in Morehead that came out to participate. It was a lot of fun to, you know, do something good with, with your neighbors. And so it was really nice to see. And I met some new people and got reacquainted with some people that I hadn't talked to in a while. So it was, it was actually really fun. And it's amazing how much buckthorn there is in our city parks. So we have to train like third graders to identify and start pulling.
Right, councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I too am gonna pile on. The Earth Week events were outstanding. Again, a shout out to city staff for organizing. But also in Ward Two, we had great turnout with community members, neighbors, children, Girl Scout troop that came out. And we were able to clean up not only Ramke Park, but also Bennett Park and along Twentieth Street and Twelfth Avenue. And so because we had so many volunteers come out, the immense, immersive, expansive space that we were able to cover. I don't know if it was the weather, I don't know if everybody was just eager to do good. We'll take it all. And so what I also want to say is, we didn't get to do buckthorn, but there was talk of more buckthorn events this fall. And so if you're sad that you missed out on some of our events last week, fear not, more are coming. And we'll all get to participate in buckthorn pulling in the fall. So keep your eye out on the city's website for more events to do.
Thank you, councilmember Niesemeyer. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also, we had a great turnout in, in Gooseberry Park. Lots of buckthorn and cleared out and garbage too. And, and I also thank you to Crystal for her work on putting that together. I wanted to mention too, a thank you to the Northern Plains United Labor Council. Councilmember Niesemeyer and I attended their Workers Memorial Day. They do this every year on April twenty eighth and it's to recognize the anniversary of OSHA, which was passed in nineteen seventy-one. For those of you who don't know, that's the Occupational Safety and Health Act. And it is to honor people who were killed on the job in North Dakota and Minnesota in the previous year. So thank you again to them for taking the time to recognize those workers and that important piece of legislation. Thanks.
I think it, councilmember White. Other councilmembers? Okay, then I will go with my mayor report and then we will go back to number nine. Well, actually, it is five forty-five, so I will give my mayor report after. Number nine on the agenda. Do I have, Mr. Trowbridge, if you wanna come up to the podium, please? Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for Macara first and second?
So move, Niesemeyer. Second, Karun.
You have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, the public hearing portion of the agenda is now open and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Trowbridge.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. So give a minute here, we have a PowerPoint or a presentation. Perfect, thank you. So this, we have two hearings tonight. This first one is for improvements in Macara first and second additions. Macara stands for Morehead Clay County Redevelopment Authority or Area Redevelopment Authority. And so that was a industrial park, that's, that's the city's industrial park that authority was created to provide some sponsorship or support for getting that area developed as an industrial park. And it was initially constructed in nineteen eighty-one. And since then, it used to be, you'll, you'll notice that there's a kind of a gap in the streets up there. There's actually streets there that had been built as public streets. And then later on, they were vacated at the request of the landowner that abuts all of that. There's easements over it for the utilities, but where those gaps are, that's actually private streets that connect those. So those private streets are not part of this project, but we do everything that leads up to them. And what you can see on there is this is mostly a mill and overlay project. There is a piece that's shown in red where Thirtieth Avenue comes into it. And that's where all of the truck traffic comes in and goes out. And there's a lot of turning movements because they're turning at the street. And that piece of pavement is, is not faring well. And we're gonna do a rehab there. So it's a full pavement replacement at that, for about a two-hundred-foot stretch there. Otherwise, the rest of the roads are doing pretty good and, and a mill and overlay would be sufficient. The existing conditions out there, so about half of the area, Macara first addition was built in nineteen eighty-one initially. Those were full-depth asphalt streets, which by the time we got to two thousand, when Macara second was being done, those streets were not holding up well. And they were rehabbed, so we fully removed the pavement and replaced it with a pavement plus gravel section. And then Macara second was built at the same time and that was built with pavement and gravel. And since then, the area has been seal coated, but no other significant maintenance has been done. And it is about time, you know, this is about the time we would expect to have to do a mill and overlay. And the PCI is support that. And so, and the PCI is Pavement Condition Index, which is based on the rating that we have done, an independent rating that we also use our engineering judgment on. We'll evaluate it and verify if those numbers are, are what we expect them to be. And this is an area, there are no sidewalks at all in this project area. And per the city policy, we look at that and, you know, is there a need to add sidewalk? Or is there a sidewalk plan for this area? Since this was developed by the city and county jointly, which is a government agency, we don't have a developer's agreement specific to it. But back previously, when we had the council approve the plans and authorize ad for bids, we did consider whether or not sidewalks should go in. And we confirmed that the intent was not to have sidewalks in this industrial park. If subsequently, there was a need for one, we could deal with that later. But that, that's the, that was the determination. So no sidewalks existing and we're not gonna be proposing any sidewalks with this project. The utilities, sanitary and storm sewer are generally in good condition. You know, these are all relatively new pipes for, for the utilities that we have. And the water main is also in good condition. So the only things that we'd be proposing to do out there for utilities is just very minor, the adjustments of manholes and things like that. So the pavement, mostly, we're proposing a two-inch mill and overlay. So we'll grind off the upper two inches, put on a new wearing course surface. And if there's any curb and gutter that needs removal and replacement, we'll do that as part of this project. There's very minimal curb and gutter replacement needed with this project. And then at the intersection of Thirtieth Avenue and Forty-first Street South, again, the, the pavement is, is not holding up as well there just because that's the part that takes the brunt of all the traffic. So we'll do a rehab there. And we'll actually do that with concrete to match what's to the west there. So it'll, it'll, it'll last better and handle that traffic better. As I'd said, there will be no pedestrian improvements and the utility improvements is very minimal, just some damaged castings. And we'll just adjust things to finish grade like we always do. So the, the project would be financed using special assessments and a general obligation bond backed by the use of special assessments. For the city policy, the assessment rate that would apply in this area is thirty-two dollars per front foot for the directly abutting properties on the mill and overlay and sixty-five dollars per front foot for a rehab assessment. And then the collector street area-wide assessment will also apply. So the city policy for roads that are the east-west or north-south collectors for an area would be assessed on an area basis at five hundred and thirty dollars per equivalent lot. For an industrial park, we've determined the equivalent lot, it'd be three per acre. And in this area, the east-west collector is Thirtieth Avenue South. And the, so that, that would be the area-wide assessment for this. So there's a total of thirty-three properties that are affected by this project. And the total amount assessed is about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So the average assessment is a little over twenty thousand dollars. Sounds like a large assessment, but these are also pretty large lots. And so that's, that's what's driving it. The smallest assessment is three thousand, three hundred dollars. And the largest assessment is ninety-four thousand dollars. And the city actually owns some properties out there that are included in these assessments as well. And so the total project financing based on, and this is based on the bids that we received last week. The bids came in very slightly over the estimate, but that's still actually underneath, the, the project budget is underneath what we'd considered when the city council approved the budget back in December. At that time, we had more of what we call contingencies unknowns during design. And so as a result, even though we had an estimate that was a little bit lower than what we got the bids on, our contingency is allowed for a higher range of that. And so we actually came in very close to the bid. So we're actually underneath the budget that we had planned back in December. And out of this, the special assessments, because there's so little curb replacement and this is a very straightforward mill and overlay with no sidewalk needs and things like that, the policy we have actually generates a higher percentage than normal. A lot of our mill and overlays might only generate forty or fifty percent, maybe sixty percent. This one, we're actually generating about eighty percent. So it actually, it'll cash flow pretty well for the city. The remaining eighteen percent of the project budget gets paid by, backed by the city through the general property tax levy from the general obligation bond. So the public notice was mailed out April twenty-eighth. And all we've received at the time this report had been prepared was one comment and that's still all received. There's, there's no additional comments since the council agenda had been prepared. And that question was just about access during construction. Nothing, no major concerns there. And we'd also done a preliminary design informational letter back in earlier April and we didn't receive any, any calls based on that. Project schedule, if the, at the close of the hearing tonight, we would ask that the council close the hearing, order the improvements and award the bids. And construction could begin as early as the beginning of June and it's anticipated to be completed in September. And then there would be an assessment hearing this fall and the council would adopt the assessment role at that time. So again, what we're. So again, what we're asking the council to consider tonight is, following the close of the hearing, would be to consider ordering the improvements and awarding the bids. You have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. I want to make sure that we don't have anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this during the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this agenda item? Sir, sir, if you have a question, can you please come up to the podium? And I will have you state your name and your address for the record, and then we'll have you fill out a form too when you're done.
Okay. Gary Bonmiller, I work for Pactive in the area that we're discussing right there. And my question is just, how would the trucks get in and out? I mean, would there be room to get through?
Thank you, sir. We just have to have you come to the podium so that everybody can hear you. That's okay. Mr. Trowbridge.
Yep. So the hardest part, normally with a mill and overlay, access is actually pretty easy. It's very, there's not much that's impacted. Because we're doing that main entrance, it becomes a little more complicated, and we'll have to have traffic use the 34th Avenue South rail crossing. And so we'll work with the businesses to make sure that they understand where we're at. We also, we're coordinating the project, because Clay County is also doing work on Highway 52, so we're working with them to make sure that the access to the business park is maintained at all times.
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. Are there any other members of the public who have any questions? Right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So move Niesemeyer.
Okay, Niesemeyer moves, white second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing portion of this agenda item has been closed. Moving on then to nine A and B, I would entertain a motion to take both of them to order improvements and to award the bid.
Niesemeyer, Karun.
So Lindas, put a motion for nine A and B, is that correct, council member Lindas? And with Karun second, all, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the resolution to order improvements and to award the bid has passed. Moving on to number 10, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for Seventh and Eighth Street Mill and Overlay.
So moved, Seldervold.
Second, Niesemeyer.
I have second, or a motion by council member Seldervold, second by Niesemeyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion of number 10 on the agenda is open. Turning it over to you, Mr. Trowbridge.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of council. So this is the public hearing for the Seventh Street North and Eighth Street North Street Improvements Project. It's a fairly small project, it's two blocks total. Again, it's mill and overlay, running between Center Avenue and First Avenue North. And so these streets, the original construction, actually on Eighth Street, our records don't even go back far enough, we're not sure when it was initially built. It's a concrete road that was overlaid in 1975, we know that, but prior to that, we don't really know when that concrete was poured. It had another mill and overlay in 1993, and then in 2017, it was getting rough, and Public Works put a lot of work into doing a mill and overlay on it at that time. And then with Seventh Street North, that had been initially paved in 1972, was mill and overlaid in 1987, and then again, Public Works did kind of some emergency work to it in 2019 to try to carry it through. So the PCI's actually looked pretty good on it, but when Public Works comes in and does those projects, it covers it up and masks it, but it doesn't really address it as well as it should be done. So it's helping buy some time until we can come to it with a more formal project with a mill and overlay. For these streets, there are sidewalks on both sides of Eighth Street North. The sidewalk that crosses the Wells Fargo Bank driveway does not meet the ADA standard, so we're going to redo that through the driveway. And then on Seventh Street, there is a continuous sidewalk on the west side. On the east side, there's not a continuous sidewalk, but there's a rail crossing just to the north, we have the quiet zone. It's intended that the crossing of the railroad tracks is on the west side, so we're not proposing to do any additional sidewalk on the east side to try to make that connection. And then utilities, generally, the, on Seventh Street, the utilities are in good condition. On Eighth Street, with the exception of the sanitary sewer, the utilities are in good condition. And part of what this project is doing is we're trying to coordinate and follow behind two other projects that we know are going on. One is the sanitary sewer brick lining project, and the other is BNSF actually contacted us a year ago saying, hey, we want to replace the concrete crossing of Eighth Street. And we asked them to delay, they were going to do it last year, and we asked them to delay it to give us time to try to do the roadwork that goes along with it. And BNSF, when they do the concrete replacement, they'll also take care of hiring the contractor that does the pavement of our road that's within their property. But we're including the cost of that, because they'll bill us for that. The cost of that is part of this project cost that we're considering at tonight's So what we're proposing to do is to do a two-inch pavement mill and overlay, and only some very minimal curb and gutter spot repairs. It also includes the work that BNSF is doing that they will invoice to us. So roughly half of the work that they're doing at that crossing, they'll pay for, and the other half about, they'll charge us for. And then, we're trying to coordinate with the brick sewer lining project, because they'll have some restoration to do, and it makes more sense for us to follow right behind them with the mill and overlay. And that's actually why we haven't yet bid our overlay work. We just recently awarded the contract on the brick sewer lining. We're still trying to work with the contractor there to determine what their schedule is, and based on that is when we'll decide when we want to receive the bids for the pavement work, because it's hard for us to set a contract completion time until we know when that brick sewer lining work will be done. And then pedestrian improvements, we've just got one short piece of sidewalk to redo through a driveway, and then it's just some very minor utility work other than that sanitary sewer work, which is being done under a separate contract. So the special assessment rate, since this one is all mill and overlay, it's that $32 per front foot. We also have, Eighth Street is a collector roadway, so the north-south collector for this area, so it also has an area-wide assessment that extends east and west. All total, there's 12 parcels that are affected by this project, and the average assessment is just a little over $2,000, which is pretty close to what the median assessment is. The maximum one was $8,769. And the project budget in this case, our cost actually, partly due to that railroad work, is much more than what we're assessing, obviously. We're assessing about 20% of what we're bonding for, and we're actually going to use some state aid funds to cover what that railroad crossing work is. And that's, so that's right now what we're estimating the total project budget to be, is a little bit under $200,000. So a mailed notice was sent out on April 28th, and today, we did receive a call. And unfortunately, the call was that we'd made a mistake on the mailing. We sent one of the notices to the wrong property owner. And that was, we had a glitch in our system on, it was a leased property, and we'd sent it to someone that we thought was the least, the lessee on it, and it turns out, they don't lease it anymore. As a result, we're going to have to send out another mailed notice to that property owner, which means that we should not be awarding, or we should not be ordering the improvements tonight. So what we'll ask you to do when we, when we're done with this presentation is, rather than close the hearing, you'll hold it open until the next council meeting. We'll mail out the notice to the property owner, to the correct property owner, notifying them that they would have until May 23rd to provide comment. If we get any additional comment, we'll update you on that. And then hopefully, on May 23rd, you'll order the improvements, and we'll proceed from there. And then, and then otherwise, we haven't received any other calls regarding this project. So the schedule would be a little bit different, although not much different, since we haven't tried to receive bids yet anyway. This just means we're delaying by two weeks the time when we would order the improvements. And maybe by then, we'll have a better handle on the, on the rest of the project schedule and can give you an update on that. So that is all I have for you tonight, if you have any questions on this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. So we will just leave this open until the next council meeting. Thank you. I apologize, I took a drink of my water wrong. It went down the wrong throat, or the wrong part of my throat, so. So back to mayor and council reports, since this is a part of the agenda item where we are basically updating one another on things that we have attended on behalf of the city, I did want, I do have quite a number of updates to provide to council and to city manager and others. On April 27th, I did meet with the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission, they were here in Moorhead, and I wanted to give a shout-out to Kristi Lefshewski, Heidi Heitkamp, and Forrest Steinhoff for doing a lot of the legacy grants that are coming to the city of Moorhead. And I did want to share this with council, because I know that I was not aware of the number of grants that the city has received for the legacy projects. But they have, we have had a number of them, and I think it just kind of goes to demonstrate how long some of our projects take. So in 2015 to 2017, we got a $275,000 grant for partial funding of the large picnic shelter at MB Johnson Park. This was actually a direct legislative appropriation. Then in 2016 to 2018, we received 1.3 million for MB Johnson Park. Again, this grant provided bathroom facilities for the large picnic shelter, a fish cleaning station, concrete walking paths throughout the park, a reclaimed bridge over Snakey Creek to open additional 20 acres of the park, and educational signage along the pass. Then in 2020, a grant of 418,000 helped to realign and rehabilitate the downtown trail. The project that was constructed provides trails away from the river, excuse me, as continued flooding damage the existing trail beyond repair. Also in 2020, a 242,000 grant was for the Homestead Trail to connect downtown to 15th Avenue North. And then in 2022, 661,000 for the Midtown Trail segment that will connect Woodland Park to Gooseberry Park. We anticipate that construction to be in 2022 to 2023. So since 2015, Moorhead has received 2.895 million dollars from the legacy funds. So just to give everybody an idea of how long some of this takes to do some of these really big projects in the city, and with that, we're going to have 16 miles of trail in Moorhead. Obviously, we have several partners with this work. The Transportation Alternative Program Grant, we received 360,000 for the Blue Goose Trail segment, and 420,000 for the Memorial Park Pedestrian Lift Bridge. And then the Audubon Urban Woods and Prairie Initiative, FM Trail Builders, River Keepers in Clay County also assists us. So this is not a lift that we do on our own, but it takes a lot of collaborative partners. Also on April 28th, I was at Moorhead Day at the Capitol with Governmental Affairs Director Lisa Bodie, and also Sherri Larson, who is our Moorhead Business Association Director. This was coordinated by the FM Chamber of Commerce, specifically Shannon Foell, Catherine Ginberg, Ginberg, and Cale Dunwardy. When we were down at the Capitol, we met with a number of influential legislators, Representative Marquardt, Keeler, Erdahl, Noor, Lee, the Speaker of the House, Representative Hortman, and also Senators Ekin, Bach, and Papas. We discussed replenishing the Unemployment Insurance Trust Fund, requesting 10 million to the Moorhead Career Academy, 3.2 million to the Dilworth Fire Station, and specifically for Moorhead, we were there lobbying for 17.5 million to finish our flood infrastructure component of our 2009 comprehensive flood mitigation plan. Again, another example of over 10 years, we've been working on flood mitigation in Moorhead. This would be the last kind of portion that we would need to finish our flood mitigation plan. I also testified with Lisa Bodie and Senator Ekin in front of the Senate Tax Committee to extend the time period for our local option sales tax. On April 30th, I was invited to attend the Iftar that was hosted by the African-American Development Association, along with council member Niesemeyer, and I don't recall, I think you were the only council member there. On May 2nd, 2022, Chief Monroe and I met, excuse me, with hundreds, literally hundreds of individuals at the Horizon Middle School to celebrate the end of Ramadan, and to say a few words. And then also that same day, I presented to the National Music, presented the National Music Week proclamation to the FM Area Music Club. And then on May 3rd, we welcomed Congresswoman Fishbach to the Moorhead Career Academy and out to showcase collaboration of our city, county, and school. And last but not least, I wanted to share this letter that we received from CAP LP, Lakes and Prairie Community Action Partnership, because I think it's important for council members to know, for those of you who maybe aren't part of this, this committee, what we do with CAP LP. And we do provide some funding from the city of Moorhead, and this one is for the Last Work Camp that provided needed home repairs to 26 households. Projects range from painting, porch construction, weatherization, installation of wheelchair ramps. So everyone, they just discuss that everyone deserves a place to live in dignity and safety. So I think, again, this just shows that we do partner with another number of entities. It's not something that the city actually does, but it is something that our community partners do, and we help contribute in some way. So just to provide information to council members on some of our partners in the community. So that is all I have for my community, or for my mayor updates, and I'm going to not drink my water, because apparently, I don't know how to do that very well or very effectively. So I will turn this over to you, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and you know, that program with CAP LP is really incredible, and our community development team does partner in that in terms of how we utilize some of our community development block grant, or some other funds, to kind of support this affordable housing stock that we have in the community that will, frankly, it's great housing that we'll never build again. So we want to make sure that we maintain it, take care of it, and preserve those older and affordable neighborhoods. So, and to be able to do that in partnership like we did during Earth Week, which was just absolutely incredible. I know we've talked about it a lot of times, but I wanted to thank you, and I wanted to thank the couple hundred volunteers that came out to help, and the coordinators, Crystal Rama, you know what, I practiced, anyway, I'm going to keep going. Raya Mahaji and Public Works Director Steve Iverson, they did just an absolutely incredible job, and they were a joy to work with, and it was just, it was just a lot of fun to be outside. The, it also, you know, coordinated, you know, all those Earth Week activities with Cleanup Days, which are going really well, and they continue this week until Friday. So I'm glad we're kind of back on track. The last couple of years with Cleanup Days was just very challenging with a global pandemic going to everybody's door. And so that was, that was what it was. I want to just also mention, these spring soakers are really something else. So, and they're, and they're incredible for people that are into underground systems and utilities. So today, we had just a lot of rain, and if anybody was driving this morning, they'd see, you know, water in, on the streets, and in some areas even, and then the underpasses and higher than others. I just want to let people know what happens. You know, the water that's coming through town on the river is very high, and so the stormwater drains are full. And so these lift stations and these pump stations and some of these projects that we have here, without it, a lot of our infrastructure's at risk, people's, people are at risk, their ability to, our ability to get around. And so it was really incredible to see all that water come through and then work through the system once these pumps got going. And by this afternoon, it was all dry, and nobody knew the difference, and it was marvelous. So, I mean, this is why thinking together and thinking about how to accomplish big projects together really does matter. And, and I take the long route to tell that. And, and I take the long route to tell that story, to say that there are experts throughout our organization and throughout this community that really know a lot, and just are kind of under celebrated a lot of times. And it's really wonderful to see that kind of work happen. That was a big, big lift this morning, and it received absolutely no attention, as it should. So the other, you know, last week, I had an opportunity, we had the Minnesota City County Managers Association, its annual conference, which was really great to get together with all these wonderful people that serve their communities. And so we had all kinds of great sessions on solving tough problems, dynamics in the kind of the political and administrative relationships. There were these senior advisor breakout sessions where you could ask questions and kind of go through kind of issues with peers, which were really great, how to support strong systems in communities, and problem solving, and engaging community, and, and so I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to actually be in this place and to be with, and to do work that I really do enjoy. And I was, I was just reminded of that last week, when you get together with folks, you look across the room, and you, and you see just some of the incredible things that happen at the local level. You know, I am thinking about, you know, people call those of us that were, well, actually I, I might be the only person that does. I kind of view us as, we're kind of the janitors of the right of way, and so we take care of all the stuff that we share. And so I think that's a really incredible thing to do, in addition to being part of all the growth and the development and the potential that, that a community can be, especially now that we're seeing that cities are what, are what the future is going to look like in terms of people choosing where to live. They're not choosing nations or states or anything like that, they're just choosing great cities. So it's really, really marvelous to be part of one in Moorhead. I went a little off track. I get hyper. And so, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Molly. Right, moving on to number 22, executive session. Do I have a motion to open, or?
I have a report.
Motion to go into executive session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A. Oh, Councilmember Hendrickson?
I give a report. Did we do a council report?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We did them quite a bit earlier today in the agenda, because we had to wait until 5:45 for a public hearing, so I apologize. So Councilmember Hendrickson, go ahead with your.
I don't have a report. No, I'm kidding.
Oh, my gosh.
No, I, I attended the Rotary 100th Anniversary, and they were chartered on May 1st of 1921. And you're saying 100 years from 1921, Chuck, that'd be 2021, but because of COVID, they had to delay it for a year, so. I was a member of Rotary for five years. They do great work in the community, they do great work for Polio, you know, they're eradicating it, they do great work for that. So it was a fun evening, I saw a lot of people I knew, and they ran it just like a regular Rotary meeting with the bell and, you know, the dollars and everything else, so it was a fun time. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Hendrickson. Okay, now on to number 22, executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Go move, Neese Meyer.
Wait seconds.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in executive session.
All right, we are back from executive session at 7:42 PM. Is there any new business? There's no new business. Any other citizens who wish to address the council? See no citizens wishing to address the council. I hereby adjourn the May 9, 2022, Moore City Council meeting.